Good evening. Welcome to the regular Selectment Board meeting, January 11, 2016. Would you all rise and pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. First item, approval of business meeting, December 14, 2015, the workshop meeting at December 21, 2015. Everybody had a chance to read them and look them over?
Yes.
Is there any questions? I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve minutes.
A motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Citizens' input. Is there anybody who'd like to be heard this early in the night?
Ellen?
Ellen?
Please come up, yes.
State your name and address for the record, please, Ellen.
Ellen Souza, 88 Warner Village Road in Spencer.
Welcome.
John asked me, John Stevens, we've been talking, asked me to come and talk about a project on the Board of Directors of Common Ground Land Trust. And we are the local land trust. We're a nonprofit organization based here in Spencer and Lester.
Just before you go, Ellen, I thought we had a conversation that we didn't want to talk about this.
Yeah, no.
Any particular project?
This is just a heads up about the property.
Okay, and that's what I'm saying is I don't think we should be talking about property when, you know, someone else's property, when there's not a, we don't have the 61 information, hasn't been carried forward. You know what I mean?
I think, and maybe there's a little confusion, is my conversation with Selectman Stevens was is to explain what they do and what the purpose of what they do to the general public, not to get into the specifics on certain property.
I think, just for clarification, what we're about, what we're about to talk about was, as typically comes up, there are properties under Chapter 61 in town, which is a tax exemption, if you will, tax reclassification on certain properties that are under a Chapter 61 program through the assessors. And when one of those properties comes up for sale or change of use, while it's under Chapter 61, the town will have a right to first refusal of purchasing of a particular property. And sometimes we're working with land trusts when that happened. But in this particular case, there is not any, we have not been informed of any Chapter 61 trigger.
Which you and I had that discussion, and that's not an issue, but it's not an issue for her to be able to come to this meeting, explain what they do, and that there could be an opportunity they'd come before us without mentioning any property.
Well, I agree, you should not mention the property because it's private. There's a property in private interest that may have a potential to be sold.
Could have a different concern, so that's...
I would hand back the map, though.
Yeah, I...
And that's why...
That was my discussion, Mr. Boebert.
Just respectfully, you know, it hasn't happened yet, so, just to protect all parties.
Why don't you tell us, Ellen, your role in terms of when properties come up for Chapter 61?
Yeah, I mean, we're a land trust, so our mission really is, we're, our whole board is all Lester and Spencer residents, all, you know, people that live in the towns. We are very interested, we, basically what we do is, we look for opportunities, we work with landowners that are trying to protect their properties from being developed. We just worked on the Smalls Farm project in the last couple of years, the family that wanted, they wanted to keep their, they wanted to sell the property, but they wanted to make sure that it remained as a farm. So we worked with them and the state of Massachusetts and the Mecheck family of Lester Breezy Gardens. They've leased the land for something like 35 years, and they were able to, through this whole, through this project, they were able to actually buy the land at agricultural value rather than development value. So that's the kind of thing that we do, we have, we work with landowners. We also worked with the Sibley Farm property. That was kind of our, we're a pretty young organization, we were formed in 2006. That was kind of the project that we cut our teeth on in terms of, you know, trying to protect big areas of very important land in the town. And really, we just, you know, we want to make sure that the town is aware that there are certain properties that when they, if they're converted out of Chapter 61, if they're sold and the buyer is taking the property out of Chapter 61, then the town does have, they have to, the landowners required legally bound to notify the town about the conversion, and the town has a right of first refusal to purchase the land at the sale price, or they can actually transfer that right of first refusal, or that transfer right to a land trust, such as what we are. So, you know, we're really just a heads up that, you know, there are a few properties in town that have high significant value to us for a lot of reasons, really prime farm soils, recreational use, you know, opportunities for trail access, hunting, skiing, snowmobiling, all of those types of activities. And there's a few in particular that we, you know, we are interested in trying to find some way to protect if it is sold. So, you know, our, what we're asking from you is to make sure that when you get that notification that a property's coming out of Chapter 61, that, you know, the clock starts ticking as soon as the town gets notified, and there's a certain time scale in which the town has to exercise that right or transfer that right. And then there's an additional period of time in which the funds, you know, we, the land trust would have to find the funds. And we have plans in place for grants, there are a lot of grant programs out there that fund acquisition of open spaces for conservation, for recreation, for trails, et cetera. So we're actively working on plans to try to secure funding. We have partners in town, like we work with the 4H, the Worcester County 4H, you know, to help expand their nature programs. So that's the kind of things that we do, and we're just, you know, want you to know that we're out there. You know, we kind of pick up the slack for, I know that conservation commissions were originally chartered in order to do that kind of work, to try to conserve certain important properties within a town. But I know that conservation commissions are really overburdened these days, they have to, you know, most of what their focus is, I think, is on wetland, you know, wetland development approvals and that kind of thing, permitting. So we're here, the organization was formed in 2006 by Rob McNeil, who used to be the highways superintendent, and he saw that there was definitely an opportunity to, basically all the towns in this whole area of central Mass, pretty much every town was represented by a land trust of some kinds, except for Spencer and Lester. So he founded the organization, got it incorporated. So we are here to fill that niche in just making sure, you know, we're not anti-development, but we feel that there are certain parts of our towns that have a lot of value in terms of, you know, not being built upon, but in use for passive recreation, snowmobiling, hunting, all the outdoor activities, and that there are some of them that are worth definitely trying to preserve.
And I appreciate that, and I appreciate you coming in tonight, because John and I had talked about it, the one stumbling block, obviously, is always, you can never talk about a property until there's a true purchase and sale. But I think it's important, you as a citizen and you being a committee, is that to get it out there, get the word out there, that it is known, that that's what the function of what you guys do. And at any point, anybody can come here and talk about it, it's just we have to be very careful how we do it. So I do appreciate you coming in tonight and explaining where you guys are coming from, and I'm sure we'll be talking short time.
Mr. Chairman, also let me apologize to Ellen, because I, we had spoken, and I didn't realize that we could not mention the property. So my apologies, I'll take responsibility for giving you confusing directions of what you could do tonight. But I am glad, it's always good to see the land trust get before the town. You know, and I have to point out that it's more than just securing properties and all, it's the, it's the attention you give to the use of those properties as well, like the way you organize the cleanup of the trails around, on the small farm property, and the way you helped get volunteers out for the, you know, for cleaning up the rail trail this past weekend. I mean, it's one thing to, you know, get a property secured, but it's another thing, you know, to keep at it and maintain it, because that's where the long-term volunteer commitment is. So I, you know, look forward to, you know, whenever we can deal in specifics. And again, I'm sorry for the confusion I think I created, I spoke with Gary, but I was not, I didn't talk to Adam about it, so, still good to have you here.
I will still hand out our brochure.
No, no.
The Maryland brochure.
Thanks, Ellen.
Well, Mr. Chairman, it's also, you know, let's reiterate that they do have a partner in this board, members of this board were involved in the initial Sibley preservation, and we worked hard to make sure that went off the right way, so...
And that has been a really huge asset for the town. I mean, I know that it was a huge piece of property that had been due to be developed, but there have been, I mean, I know specifically there have been a lot of groups from around the state that have come to visit Sibley Farm for tours, you know, and they come and they tour, they hike around the property and look at birds and, you know, butterflies and all those kinds of things, but, you know, that's recreational tourism, they come and they eat at the restaurants afterwards, and, you know, they're bringing money and good things into the town.
I'll always remember that project, because we got together with concerned groups, and we got something together where no group that had an interest in that property was left out of the picture. That went from, you know, open recreation opportunities to the snowboarders speaking to us about, you know, their availability to the land, so...
It was truly a partnership.
It was a good project, so thank you for coming tonight, and you do have the ear of this board, I believe. Thanks, Ellen.
It is now 6:17. There's no communication, so we're going to move on to old business. Old business is continuation of the public hearing?
No, this is a new public hearing. We have actually had several public meetings, but I'm going to introduce Elizabeth tonight from Pioneer Valley.
So we'll open the public meeting at 6:17, and we'll have Elizabeth come up.
Elizabeth from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. As you know, Chris Dunphy was here several times with Elizabeth in preparation for our next application, which is due in February of 2016. So just a little reminder, we started this program, I think, in about 2008 was our latest. We did some projects in the 90s, but in 2008 we started up again with some housing rehabilitation projects and worked our way into infrastructure projects, working through awards in 2012, 13, and 14. We didn't apply for an application last year because we had, still had some money available to spend, so here we are looking FY 2016. She's going to mention some of the projects that are on the proposed application, and that those projects are in relationship to projects that we had already funded before, such as the design of Chestnut Street, which is a project that was approved in 2014, now we're going to be proposing to put in the application for the next round, the construction. So there's kind of a series of applications and tasks that you go through when we're looking at infrastructure projects. We pretty much do with planning, design to construction, and planning, design, construction, et cetera, et cetera. So a lot of the work that's going to be leading to this application has been done, is tied into projects that you've previously approved before, and that we've previously been awarded and have since implemented. And as part of the final piece leading up to their application, they do a public hearing just to get the, get some feedback from either the board or anyone in the audience that would like to comment on the activities that we're proposing. And I think with that, I'll turn it back over to Elizabeth.
Sure. Hi, hello again. As you know, the Community Development Block grant funding comes from HUD through the Department of Housing and Community Development at the state level, and it's competitive funding that we'll be applying for this year in the Community Development Fund One group. It's a highly competitive group, so we're hoping that this year we'll be successful with our application, as we have been in the past. As you know, the types of projects that we can apply for under the Community Development Block Grant Program include economic development, public facilities, infrastructure, planning, social services, and housing assistance and development types of projects. In the past, as Adam said, we've been doing kind of a planning component and a construction component, back and forth. This started with our South Side Neighborhood Infrastructure Improvement Plan, which was done, I believe, in 2008. And since then, we've been, or 2012, excuse me, since then, we've been doing kind of an alternating design, construction, design, construction, fairly successfully, so we're hoping to continue that this year. The Community Development Strategy, which is the other required piece of the application, we came and we discussed it in November, and you all approved it, and the programs that we're proposing to include in the grant this year fall within what we stated as the town's priorities within the Community Development Strategy. So we worked with Adam and with Steve Tyler to develop the programs that are going to be included in this year's application. The proposed programs that we have are the Chestnuts Street Improvement Project, it'll be the construction of infrastructure improvements designed under the fiscal year 14 Community Development Block Grant Program. Work will include basic infrastructure systems, including street, sidewalks, drainage, and sewer, based on both the results of the South Side Neighborhood Infrastructure Study and the fiscal year 14 Design Project. The project will occur on Chestnut Street between Maple and Early Street. The second project that we're proposing is the Cherry Wall Lloyd Dyer Area Planning Project, which will design future improvements for a future construction grant. This would include improvements to the basic infrastructure systems, street, sidewalk, drainage, water, and sewer on portions of Cherry Wall and Lloyd Dyer Drive. In addition to the administrative costs included in the grant, the total grant application will be up to a maximum of $800,000, and that's what we're entitled to apply for as a CDF One community with one physical project. We're still working on getting the final numbers for each of the different pieces finalized, but the total cost will be a maximum of $800,000. For support of the program, we held a public meeting at the Spencer Housing Authority site on Cherry/Wall Street in December, and we also did a direct mailing to the residents of Chestnut, Wall, Cherry, and Lloyd Dyer Streets to both inform them of the projects, give them an opportunity for comment, and obtain feedback on the area. The kinds of things we heard from some of the comments that we received talked about the sidewalk conditions being deplorable, lots of potholes, water shut-off areas being exposed, the sidewalks pitching toward the doors instead of away from people's homes, and that repair in this area is long overdue. So we're hoping that with these projects, we'll be able to satisfy some of the issues that residents in the area have noticed over the years. The end result of the Chestnut Street project construction will be very similar to the finishes that you saw on Mechanic Street, which we're just finishing up this year, which is the other thing that we did under the fiscal year 14 grant application. So that was to construct Mechanic Street and design Chestnut Street, so this one would be to construct Chestnut Street and design the next phase of the project. So with that, I'm open to any questions that you all might have, and then I have a request for two formal motions that I'd like the board to make in support of our grant application. And then we'll go back, and PBPC will submit the application on your behalf at the end, in the middle of February, I believe it's due on the 12th this year. And hopefully, we'll be hearing a positive result July or August is usually when the results come back. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
I will, because this is a public hearing. See if there's anybody from the audience first that would like to be heard. Anybody has any questions? Seeing none?
Mr. Chairman, again, this may be a simple question, but does this grant money, would this grant money get affected by any budgeting process being done? If you can, if you can help.
So what Mr. Pepe is referring to is recently the governor implemented 9C cuts last week, those are in the operating budget for the state, based on the budget that was approved and signed by him back in July. This money originates at the federal government under HUD, and then is forwarded to the Department of Housing and Community Development, essentially a grant from the federal government to the state government, who then administers a grant program down to us. So it's technically not part of their operating budget, money that's raised through taxes and other revenues that the state has. So this should be okay in terms of whether, any further 9C cuts come?
Great.
The CDF One is a very highly competitive group, so we're hoping that we'll be successful this year, but it shouldn't be affected by those types of budgetary issues.
I just had one comment, one thing I wanted, just for the record, is that, so we're only allowed to apply up to a certain amount of money, there's certain thresholds, whether it be in one given year, whether or not you're a regional project, or you're doing back-to-back years. So in this case, we're anticipating that the cost of the construction may come in such that it would rise above the total grant level, and working with Steve Tyler and the water commissioners, the sewer commissioners, and also any potential Chapter 90 funds, we're going to put a letter into the state, letting them know that the town was committed to doing this project. We've completed a design, and this grant should fund the majority of the project, but any gap above that will work and will commit any portion of town funds, whether it be water, sewer, Chapter 92, completing that project. For example, most recently, there was a change order for sewer on Mechanic Street, the sewer commissioner stepped up and put $15,000 towards that project to complete it while it was under construction. So for any shortfalls, when the project goes out for bid, we're going to commit some town funds to make sure the project goes through.
Right. Which is the same happened on Maple.
Yes, hi Elizabeth. Nice to see you back. So share with us some of the comments you got at Spencer Housing Authority, or what you received in the mail, what were people concerned about?
Sure. There were only a few that had written comments, a lot of them were just the income survey questions that we were requesting. As you know, this area of town is both our target area, which is an area of town that is focused for all of our redevelopment efforts, it's a required portion of the application as well. This area, in particular in the South Side Neighborhood, is part of a slum and blight designation. This is the last year of the designation that we can use it, but it allows us to pursue these types of projects without income qualifying individual streets. The Community Development Block Grant Program is focused on assisting low to moderate income individuals specifically. So as a, as part of the project, even though we're in the slum and blight designation, we requested some income survey information from folks, just as a, you know, additional level of showing of need. So the comments that we received from the public included that the sidewalks are in deplorable condition, potholes and water shut-offs are exposed, sidewalks pitched towards street-level doors, repair is long overdue, there are no sidewalks in some areas, there are potholes on Wall Street, hope all the work is done and that it helps the drainage in our area. And of the 112 people that we received information back from, 90 of them in this area were low to moderate income, so we'll definitely be serving that population and assisting with the redevelopment of the area.
You'd already prepared the design for the construction work that you hope will be funded, right?
The design for Chestnut Street was funded under our successful fiscal year 14 application. What we're really seeing this as a, you know, so we did Mechanic Street, and now we're doing Chestnut Street, so we're really trying to fill in some of the other areas, which is why we chose Wall, Cherry, and Lloyd Dyer as the first kind of connector street to bring you from Maple over to me.
Were the problems that you just identified, were those, you already saw those coming, and there was incorporated into the design?
We did, especially from the South Side Infrastructure Study that was done in fiscal year 12, it really identified all the kind of deficits in the infrastructure, areas where sidewalks were failing, roads were failing, subsurface infrastructure, they did some camera work underground to really highlight the areas that needed to be focused on and help further define the projects. So we had preliminary cost estimates from that, and we've been refining them for the type of design work that we're pursuing, and we have a good cost estimate in hand based on the design work for Chestnut Street that we'll be able to use.
This doesn't get us into rehabbing any properties, like the previous discussion?
No, this year we don't have any room in the application for ongoing housing rehabilitation like we've done in the past, but hopefully it's something that we might be able to include in future applications.
Well, this is an important first step, you get the infrastructure up to par.
My only question is, so when we did, when you did Mechanic Street, we already knew that we had an issue. I mean, we walked that thing with the sidewalk being yea high and so forth, so this will give us the opportunity to finish that design and take it to the next step, and that's the purpose of this grant, correct?
For Chestnut Street, yes, to do the construction of Chestnut Street and then design future improvements for Cherry Wall and Lloyd Dyer Drive.
Exactly.
So really connect, you know, finish kind of some of the missing pieces that are in the South Side.
Right, but I just wanted to be clear that we are, we're doing the project on Chestnut, but yet the other portion of this is to redesign and get the design ready for the upcoming next project, hopefully would be Lloyd Dyer Drive and Wall Street.
So it's a two-phased project, you always have to design in one year and construct in the next, because no one grant could fit all of that cost.
Exactly. Any other questions? I have a couple of motions we need to make.
First, if there's no more comments from the public, you close the public.
We're going to close it, I already asked that. So we're going to close the public hearing at 6:30.
I think you have the two, my two requested proposed motions.
Actually, why don't we do that? Why don't we actually have a formal vote to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to close the public hearing for the fiscal year 2016 CDVG application submission approval.
The motion do have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Pepe.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for the authorization to submit the proposed fiscal year 2016 Spencer Community Development Fund One, is that Fund One?
Yes.
Grant application to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development in an amount not to exceed $800,000, as detailed in the public hearing, and to include funding for the Chestnut Street Improvement Project and the design of the Cherry Wall Lloyd Dyer Area Improvement Project.
The motion do have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Is it unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for the authorization for the chairman of the board of Selectmen to sign all required forms, documents, and authorizations pertaining to the proposed fiscal year 2016 Spencer Community Development Fund One Grant Application.
The motion do have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. You're all set?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's hope this is successful.
You too.
Good luck so far.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to bypass A.
Yep, just an announcement for the public and for anyone that was here for this item. Under New Business, we had originally scheduled to have the Spencer East Brookfield Regional School District Superintendent and District Controller here with us tonight, and also in a joint session with the East Brookfield Board of Selectmen, but we decided to reschedule and postpone to the 25th due to the fact that the superintendent's been ill, so we want to give her adamant time to prepare, and I think they'll be a little bit further along in the budget process as well, so hopefully we have, it'll be up to our benefit to wait two weeks as well. The East Brookfield Board of Selectmen are on board with that postponement, so we'll reschedule that for 6:00 PM on Monday, January 25.
Perfect, look forward to that one. Next item is an action item, vote to approve the request of the Fish and Game Club for an alcohol license change of manager, and we do have him here tonight.
You guys want to come up? So we have had applications submitted through Brenda. Brenda, as you know, handles all of our alcohol licensing for the board, so as part of the licensing process and any changes, they're required to submit an application to the Board of Selectmen. In this case, the Fish and Game Club has submitted an alcohol license change of manager, and submitted all the paperwork to our assistant Brenda, and you have that information in your packet. And maybe you guys want to just do a quick introduction of yourselves and what you're doing?
I'm Bill Edwards, director of the fish and spitzer.
President of the club.
President of the club.
I'm Vic LaCroy, I'm 12 Church Street in Spencer, I'm the vice president of the Fish and Game.
I'm Jim Earl, 23 Lake Street in Spencer, I'm on the Board of Directors, and going to be the new manager, I guess.
Yep. Sounds very exciting.
Some days you're so enthusiastic.
You are, you are, you are. Hey, I was the only one that voted against me.
Did everyone step back and you understand?
So all the paperwork is in order for this. I'll leave it to the board. Any questions there?
Don't have any questions?
No certification, anything needed?
All paperwork, all training, everything, certifications all submitted.
And I did ask Vic, everybody is TIP certified, as we know, so...
Just for your information, we don't have anybody with payroll individual at the Fish. The Fish is strictly volunteers, and what we do require of our bartenders, that they all be TIP certified, and we comply with all of the state, federal, local, and any other regulation we find.
And there are many.
So if we're all set and there's no questions, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the request of the Fish and Game Club for the alcohol license change of manager to James Earl.
The motion do have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck, Jimmy.
I'd also like to mention, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I've never, it's been a while since any representatives have come before us, I'd like to thank you for your support, even though it was in a rental agreement for the senior center for the few years you did, and thank you, thank you.
I got the privilege of taking a plaque down. I got the privilege of taking a plaque down to give them, they're part of the community, no doubt about it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay. Item C is action item relocation of Snowbird Trail easement at the landfill cap. Mr. Tyler and Brad, and we'll see where we go. I think you all have your map and anything else.
Everybody should have this packet. I have one here too, you need one?
I'll switch. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening. I guess I'll do a brief introduction, Steven Tyler with the Spencer Utilities and Facilities Office. I think if any of you recall, this process actually started with the landfill cap repairs, and we had that area on the back of the landfill where Steve is part of the back side of the landfill where the trail existed, but other users, you probably motorized vehicles, have done significant damage to landfill cap, but he recently had to make an investment to repair that. So, as part of that process, I reached out to the Snowbirds because we wanted to, you know, find a way to not cut them off, and so they, since that time, about two years ago, have been investigating alternative routes. We've met with them a few occasions, and they've done a study and analysis, and so I'm gonna turn it over to Brad to present that.
Thank you, Steven. I thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to present to you tonight. I'm Brad Brand. I live at Seven Meadow Lane in Lester. I am the Vice President of the Snowbird Snowmobile Club in town. As you know, the Snowbirds have been in town or established in town for over 40 years. We do have a complete loop to the south of Powell Park, and to the north, we actually have our clubhouse up at Camp Marshall, the 4H camp. Over 40 miles of trails within the town. We appreciate everything that the town has done for us over the years, and I appreciate Steven approaching the club last year, coming to our meetings and presenting the fact that we will have to be removing the existing trail system. I did go, recently I did go out to the trail system, and I have begun the GPS tracking on the trails. I was asked to do as much exploratory work as I could on the trails.
I'm having a hard time because you gave me a Word file and I don't exactly know how you plan on trying to present this that way.
It's not coming up. The file's not coming up?
Well, that's the first part, yeah, how-
Usually you have to- I'm sorry, I don't-
I'd take a look at it, but it wouldn't help.
Yeah.
Is there a tip to get this thing to sync with the projector, which is something that I-
Usually it's- That was the function of the monitor. That's what I was just trying to do. Function of TV icon? Oh, I think you have it.
Sam, please wait.
No, it was the laptop, not the job.
Anyway, everyone has a packet, so maybe they're gonna just walk through the packet in the short term?
I'd be glad to, and I apologize for the, it was a Word document that was, I didn't realize I'd be presenting tonight. On the first page is, what we discussed was two different routes, basically off of the rail trail. The first route will be to the, to the south. The south end, when we went about 50 yards to 100 yards, we ran into quite a bit of wetlands, to be blunt. The, this is the top picture saying that we did go to the left from the rail trail. It was only a 50-yard walk on my GPS, and at that point, on the next page, as you can see, I ran into water rather quickly, right off of the edge of the bridge, as a matter of fact, and it just kept getting deeper, to the point that I could not even progress any farther. So, understanding that that's not the good way to go and the wrong way, we turned around and we started to head towards the north. So, from the rail bit, we traveled north and northwest towards the Flexcon Corporation. We stayed around the bottom of the cap in the woods area. As you can see, on the next page, which will be the third page, you can see the new proposed route. It goes to the north towards Flexcon, heads northwest, west, and then southwest back into the landfill property. So, I walked this off. I tried to take pictures every 50 yards or so to watch, to see the terrain, to make sure that you understood the terrain and that it is very open. On the next couple of pages, you'll see it's very open. We did flag off every 50 yards or so. It's good open area as far as it's not congested with a lot of brush, a lot of overgrowth. It is on high ground. There is no wetlands at all. I tried to, like I said, take pictures every 50 yards or so, and there is no indication of wetlands on that route that I took to the north. At one point, at the northern end, you can actually see the landfill, you can see the cap from the woods, and that's the last, that's the closest that we come to the cap at all, which there is a lot of interference, we'll say, in the way to ensure that the, we don't get the breakthroughs of the motorized vehicles through that area. We go northwest, once we go northwest a little more, we actually come right up to the corner, pretty close to the corner of the Flexon property in their back parking lot. I'm not sure the number of the building in the back, but we do come near that area, and the reason I'm pointing that out is that if approved, this would be a great multi-use trail, not just for the snowmobile group, but also for multi- traveling, for people on break from Flexcon. It could be a very good multi-use trail for them, whether on break or after work or before work, because it does come close to their parking lot. It does not come onto their property, but it does come close to the parking lot. After it comes out of the woods, at that very corner, at the very top northeast corner, northwest corner, I apologize, when it comes out to the top of that, it takes a sharp left and it follows the wood line all the way around inside the landfill, but all along the wood line, right up to the access road to the landfill itself. At that point, we plan on putting up all kinds of stakes that would say stop ahead, stop there, and make sure that we have stay-on-trail markers, and during the summer or the spring, when the snowmobiling season is over, which is basically only two months, we take out all those trail signs and we shut the trail system down. Once we cross the road, you can see on one of the pages, I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers, the next to the last page, you can see that last little spur, that you cross the access road, go across the landfill at the lower half, which can be adjusted however you'd like, but it enters back into the original area where we, we're coming out currently, right by what I call the practice area for the, for the fire department and things like that. The, once again, it will be marked off, it will be labeled well, it will be no motorized vehicles except for snowmobile signs all over it, arrows, stay-on-trail markings, and it will be staked, once it gets out into the open, it will be staked every 50 yards to say stay-on, stay-on-trail, and that will be the trail marked. The trail will also be groomed constantly too, so that, at that point, you know that you're going to be on a very well-defined trail to stay on. I did walk it off. It seems nice and clean. It seems like a pretty easy cut without disrupting anything, no, no large trees at all. We try to stay away from those. We need an eight-foot wide path to be able to safely maneuver through, and once again, it will be well-labeled, and I will answer any questions you have regarding this. I do appreciate the opportunity from Mr. Tyler to come to see us and give us the opportunity to knock this off and present it to you, but I will answer any questions that we do have.
Mr. Chairman, I did, the only thing, question I had, that you answered it, was there is one point where theoretically the trail goes over that road that goes up, that's used every Thursday and Saturday by, by other, that'd be the only concern, and you told me you're gonna have it marked very clearly, you know, stop up ahead, yada, yada, yada. So, yeah, that's, that's the only, and you have to clear, clear out some of the, some of the trees to make your cut through the-
The trail itself on the back side, that is correct. We do have quite a, we belong to the Snowmobile Association of Massachusetts, so we do buy quite a bit of signs from them, so we do have arrows, we have stay-on-trail signs. I should walk them with me, I presented them with, you know, to show you. Stay-on-trails, stay-on-marked trails, make sure that you have your permits with you, stop, stop ahead. So, we do very well, we don't over-advertise because that's kind of pollution-
Yep.
But we do get the word out there and you get the notification to stay on the trail.
How many members are currently?
Membership?
Yeah.
We have, we usually run about 120. It hasn't been a good year for snow. As of our last meeting, it's been 44 members.
How many from Spencer? Do you have that breakdown?
The membership from Spencer, I do not have that breakdown, I apologize.
I have concerns of just shutting this down to just 25 to 44 people, letting them have access and not the whole town. I don't think we should just strictly restrict it to the Snowbirds.
I think we're just, I, correct if I'm wrong, just allowing them access to go around the lane cap issue, and you did mention that, you know, we could advertise that this path is available, like behind the Flexcon building, that it is open to, I think we can coordinate, you know-
It's not restricted to just the Snowbirds, and as Brad mentioned, that there's an opportunity there to use the trail off-season or other times for folks to walk through Flexcon or other, correct? I mean, and I'm assuming that you have other trails-
I'm looking, I'm looking at maybe ATVs or something like that.
Oh, you want to allow, you want to allow-
Have maybe access to the town, town land, just not the snowmobiles?
I guess I would present, and I guess I'll turn it back to you guys in terms of, you guys know the property better in terms of whether or not that's a compatible use for what's out there. I know one of the things we're looking to do here is because of ATV use and other uses, why we're relocating the trail to begin with, is that correct?
Right, correct.
Okay, so, we don't want to just move one problem, relocate to another, another area, and hopefully that's not gonna do that.
ATVs for the damage, because I've actually walked the snowmobile trails and I can see where the banks are, where they do damage when the snowmobiles are.
So, let me back up. You're concerned about ATVs using it, or you want to make sure you allow ATV use?
I want, I want to not just restrict it to the snowmobiles. If we're gonna, if we're gonna have one access, we should have access for all. Or no access at all.
I guess my initial comment is this is a bit of a curveball. I don't know how to deal with it. I don't know if ATVs can legally drive on any of the trails that they're using right now. You know, they're not supposed to be on the rail trail, and they're not supposed to be on any DCR lands. I don't know what trails ATVs are permitted on right now. I would say that the use is not compatible with ATVs.
I want to open up-
I think it's a twofold, and ATVs are registered just like snowmobiles, so, so, I don't know where the law falls in, I wouldn't have a clue to know, but I can tell you this, is we already have a problem with motorbikes still climbing, okay? We have a problem with the snowmobiles with high tracks, cleated tracks, so it wasn't all just motorbikes. So, I think we gotta solve this problem so that, God forbid, if somebody decides, and I know you only have 44 guys showing up right now, but it's not just 44 people that show up to run this trail, it's wide open to everybody. So, so I don't think we're narrowing it down to say people can't use it. I just think that, I don't think it's all the motorbikes that did the damage. I mean, I've walked it, so, but that's a different subject.
Correct. All right, so right now, or what has been historically, there has been historically use on our property by snowboards and other ATVs or whatever. So, what we're trying to do is, in order to comply with our DEP permits, I'm assuming, and the other, is try to make sure we maintain the integrity of the landfill cap by relocating with an existing trail and working with a group that we know that's formalized, rather than just some kid out of his garage flying on an ATV. We know we have a contact here, we have a group that uses that trail historically. We'd have an opportunity to work with them to relocate it in an area that's compatible. That's number one. Number two is the other issue of, you know, I don't think-
That's a separate issue, though.
Correct. So, number one is we're just wanna, we want to make sure, because at the end of the day, it's on public property, it's not, in terms of legality, it's owned by the town of Spencer, and under that direction, we have the authority to decide who gets to use it and who doesn't. At this point, I think we need to come to narrow it and say, is this a good location? Because the location's no good, right? We know that.
We can't use that, so we gotta move forward on that aspect of it. Is any other subsequent use of it is for a different subject, I think.
It's definitely gonna be half, if, I mean, if that's the direction you guys want to go, and that's definitely something that we're gonna have to talk about.
Our DEP order, my reflection is, is that we need to prohibit ATVs from being on landfill cap.
I agree. Listen, we're not arguing that point. I'm saying, that discussion tonight isn't for here.
Okay, well, it's, I guess indirectly part of the conversation-
Because, you know, two weeks ago on a Saturday, I'm down there, because the car's driving on the rail trail, okay? So, that's a different subject for a different time. I mean, we walked it, I spent a lot of time down there with you guys, walked it afterwards, looked at the scenario, so I think that our main concern right now is how do we protect what we just spent money on?
Correct, and snow's coming, they're gonna want to use it, they're gonna want to use the trail, they're gonna want to bypass that area, you know, get from point A to point C and use B to get there, so where are we gonna put B? And that's what we're talking about. So, so if we can agree that this location makes sense, this takes care of at least at minimum 44, maybe 120 users or anything in between, right? We can guarantee that we've identified a relocated trail for them, and that takes care of Steve's concerns, DEP concerns, and this concerns. I think that's, that's where you go first. In terms of who gets to use it other than them, that's maybe another discussion, but, you know, maybe we, maybe we come back at the next meeting with research from Steve that says, here's where it says we can't allow that, but we can't allow this.
Yeah, and show me in writing what the, what the criteria is, what the law says aren't an issue, and if we had a formal ATV group, maybe they'd be sitting in front of us. We have a formal snowmobile club that's been in existence for a long time, and let's correct this issue because we gotta keep moving.
Yeah, and they've been respectful, they manage their, you know, nothing's perfect, but they manage their own trails, like, you know, you have them down by me and you manage them pretty, pretty well. But I do have a question about snowmobile use as, in itself. Does this get published on some kind of regional?
There is a map. We do have a map.
So, we will go beyond, the possibility of going beyond 44 is, is a distinct possibility, because people just regionally, they just go out and ride, you know, it's-
They already knew that, right, Tony?
That is correct. Can I respond?
Sure.
We, we also belong to the Snowmobile Association of Massachusetts at the same time, and every snowmobile has to have a trail permit sticker on it, along with Massachusetts registration. That combination gives the, excuse me, the registered snowmobile that is a member of the club and a member of SAM, the right to travel on the trail system, whether it be Spencer or Lester or any of the surrounding towns. Once they have that trail permit, they do have the right to ride on the trail system as permission is granted. We get it an awful lot from the private landowners, 90% of our trail system is up by the private landowners. So, my point is that we are heavily overseen by another entity, the environmental police officers keep an eye on that, ensure that every snowmobile that is on the trail is registered. We have a local person, Dan Reeves, who's an environmental police officer, that keeps an eye on that personally. As far as other traffic on the trail system, the environmental police will be taking care of that, ensuring that everyone that is on the trail system is registered and has a right to be there. Just wanted to add that.
Absolutely.
We also, to answer your question about being involved, yes, we're heavily involved in the town. As a matter of fact, we had eight people appear Saturday at the clearing, and we worked from nine o'clock till 2:30 in the afternoon and clearing the rail trail for just four with the Conservation Commission, and we had a great turnout, and they're very, very appreciative of our efforts.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't mean to scare you, but it does come, you know, if someone from Connecticut wants, they have to, it comes with a cost for them to get a permit to-
That is correct.
I have a brother-in-law has like four states, and it's expensive.
Right, you just can't drop a trailer and unload and ride. That's not, well, it is a possibility for a limited time until you get caught, but it is heavily policed.
I, I think for a group, as you said, Mr. Chairman, it's been in existence for a while, if, if there's no reservation- a while, if, if there's no reservations from Mr. Tyler, I, I don't have an issue with this, as long, as long as that one little spot that goes over the road, we, we can make, make sure that's totally safe.
Definitely, but keep in mind, you're crossing over South Spencer Road anyway, right?
That is correct.
There's a lot more concern in going across that than the median, and that's not the only road they cross, exactly.
Go up, go up by the black and white when they go across up there.
Oh, I see.
It's pretty good when you get the other side of South Spencer, you can go to McDonald's that you take the left, and that's gonna bring you across to the Route Nine to the power line.
Come by my place on a Wednesday night, you can hear him buzzing.
Mr. Chairman, the, the, but let's be clear, the, the issue before us right now is a relocation of, of this-
Exactly.
Of, of the snowmobile trail, I, and I do think it's, I'm glad Chris brought up the, the issue about multi-use because I think that deserves a, a larger forum, developing parks and rec, and sort of the whole, the whole trail system, and it gets into economic development, Tony, because we've, we've, we've long said, and some people have been saying it for a long time, that we've got some, you know, we've got some great trails and great opportunities to link up some really unique lands, and that's gonna carry us into all, all kinds of modes of recreation, and, you know, that's a, that's a larger discussion for, for another time, so that we, we just be clear, this doesn't, we're not, we're not, the, the point of this is not to exclude anybody, but to, but to address this, this issue with our, with our cap and to make sure we, we're, we're in, we're not in violation and we can, you know, proceed with our plans for the, for the, you know, for the landfill cap, but I, I, I am liaison with Parks and Recs, I'll bring it up in the next meeting, I think it, it deserves an airing because we got horses, we got people on, on bikes and motorbikes and four-wheelers and, and snowmobiles, and it's a good time to say, okay, what's open to whom out, out there, and we're obviously gonna have some restrictions. But just to be clear, Brad, on, on what you need to do, you, you still have to clear some, some, some space out there for that, that eight-foot-wide path that, that you need, I guess we're lucky that the weather is, permits some, some, some land clearing, is that something you see doing sort of pretty soon, so that you can, so that you have your loop is, 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 is remains open and unbroken?
Yes, sir, I do have the crew that was working Saturday.
They're ready to go.
The shot we saw is-
Yeah, very good pictures on Facebook of the work that was done, I did see that.
Thank you very much, yes, yes, sir, we, we are ready to clear, and like I said, we'll, we'll be very selective, very small, as, cut as least as possible, we can reroute, after all, it is a trail, it's not a highway, so you can move around, and we are prepared to cut as soon as possible.
You do that with, with private landowners, you go in with their permission and keep things, you know, keep things open and clear, and that's, that's part of the-
As a matter of fact, we have a packet-
Negotiation to do?
Yes, we have a packet, we go around with, to every landowner, we present all the laws of Massachusetts, their rights as a, as a landowner, they cannot be sued and things like that, so we do walk around with a packet to every landowner every year and get permission because it's very vital, and insurance is also covered too, through the snowmobile association of Massachusetts with our clubs for any liability or any damage that could be had.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, I think you need a motion to relocate the, and give grant permission to the folks at the snowmobile club to mark it and move it and put on maps and-
The only thing I would ask is, Steve, you're familiar with the trees they are taking, correct?
No.
Okay.
I haven't been out to see where they marked, I think, specific trees.
I just wanna make sure that we're not-
You just said you walked it with conservation commission, so there's no concern in any of the areas-
I have not.
Oh, I thought you said you met with Margaret out there.
No, sir, I did not.
When he went to the left because of the water-
Oh, went to the left, okay.
Yes.
So, it's all, but it's all highland area?
It's all high on that side.
So, do you wanna make it subject to approval of the, Steve, or in terms of what-
Well, I think it's-
Trees over a certain size or something?
Do you need Flexcon's approval because it's-
We're not on their property.
No, no.
It's just along the backside where we mow-
You can clear, I mean, not that you would, but you can clear out the property, but what he's saying is that most of the area they're going is not wooded.
A lot of it's-
Not an instrument string or-
On the edge of the tree line, not requiring removal of, of ten-inch caliber trees or anything like that.
Most of it's brush, oversized brushes, most of it's where he's going, he's going around the edge.
That's my only question with this, is I don't wanna get in there and then say, oh-
He's not cutting ones like this, okay?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, it, it should be subject to UNF approval and conservation commission approval?
Right, exactly.
Sounds good.
And that's the way it needs to be worded.
Motion.
Motion.
All that.
And really, the motion is to relocate this subject to UNF and the conservation-
Yeah, one last check to make sure there's nothing outrageous that needs to be cleared.
And after that, that path is created, you still have that, that barrier to, to discourage people from cutting across or leaving the path and-
Yeah, that's right, there's, there's a spur coming off of the rail trail that we'd like to possibly work with the town while they're working on that rail trail to possibly create a better, shut off the access to that with probably large boulders right up to that point, and if requested, then we can, we can seal that off completely. Unfortunately, we do the best we can, like we said, that not everyone is perfect, that not everyone abides by the law, but we do the best we can to shut off through traffic while we're not using the, using it for the ten months of the year, actually, we only use it for two months out of the year.
Any speed limits?
Speed limits?
On the trail?
Is, um-
Yeah, there was one of the only-
There, we can, we can post speed limits on the trail, there, there aren't any posted speed limits within the state, but we, you know, we can put up caution signs or we can limit trail speeds, with such a small winding trail, it would be difficult-
Like you're on an open lake.
You're not gonna, you're not gonna go up there, you know.
I was thinking the rail trail, you know, buzzing down the rail trail.
We can, but this is the spur off of the, the rail trail that we're discussing, so whatever you'd like, we can, we can make amends.
Is speeding on the rail trail been an issue, is it, is it, I'm not-
Never, we never had any issues, I never had any accidents or problems on that rail trail, we use probably a quarter of a mile of that rail trail, and then we take a hard left and we head down Howe Park after that, right after the Beaver Pond, we take a hard left, and hopefully that will be the next stage with the conservation commission, cutting a trail from there to Howe Park with the RTP grant money that you're looking for, but that's, we only stay about a quarter mile on that trail.
I see, you're not using-
However, other people from town might be using the whole trail for access, but we don't groom that in.
Some community from Chesson Street.
Right.
And again, again-
Yeah, that's a different time.
But other than that, enforcement, freedom and enforcement, we don't, we don't, we don't have patrols, that's, that's an EOP, EPO issue.
EPOs, yeah.
If, if someone's abusing, you know, regulations of, of the state on the, on trails, then that's, that's, we don't have a, a patrolman from the police department going through the woods and doing that, it's an EPO issue.
I still think that when you have a group, and not to get off the motion, when you have a group that, that's committed, and, believe me, I have to believe that if they saw something going out of whack, it's gonna be handled.
The police themselves.
We patrol our own, we're often, and if we do have complaints-
It is a self-policing situation, so.
Right, and if we do have complaints, we bring it over to the environmental police, and like I said, we do have an environmental police officer that lives in town, he's very aware and very eager to assist when we have to escalate an issue.
So, the motion was made, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brad, thanks, Steve.
I appreciate the opportunity, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is DCR support letter for the rail trail improvement, phase two.
Correct, so, Conservation Commission, the Parks and Recreation Commission, and staff such as Steve and Evan are working on repair and maintenance of the depot trail, phase one was a, a grant that was applied for and received for forty-nine thousand dollars, and they're working on that part now, and have been working on that, that was making repairs to culverts and doing some other work, so they're looking to apply for a phase two, they have a gentleman named Dick O'Brien who's helping them with the grant writing, who helped with the first phase, which was awarded, you have a copy of Steve Tyler's recommendation letter, support, letter of support already included in here, and a draft letter that Chairman Woodbury would sign, so as you're familiar with, when we're submitting applications for grants, there's a lot of information that goes into these grants, such as quotes and specifications and other things, and most certainly letters of support from town officials that they're all on board, so, what they're asking for tonight is a motion to authorize Chairman Woodbury to send a letter of support to include in the application for phase two. It's basically just additional work, we'll head to the trail.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that, to draft a letter for support to DCR for the rail trail improvements for phase two.
Your motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, town administrators report fiscal year 2017 budget update.
Just a couple of things I wanted to touch on, one is I have confirmed the date with our legislators for February twenty-second, where Representative Durant and Bertham and also Senator Goby will be in attendance, so what I would like to do is between now and January twenty-fifth, which is your next business meeting, two weeks for tonight, I would like you guys, if you could, to come to that meeting on the twenty-fifth prepared with any questions or any research, response, anything that requires a response from them, so that they have approximately a month, I'll email them the next day, so they'll have approximately a month to prepare, obviously, they're gonna be talking about the state budget, as the senator usually does, in the previous, in the past it's been Senator Brewer, this time it's been Senator Goby, and they'll work the three of them into providing answers to any other questions that you have, so whether it's regarding vocational, out-of-district bills that we've been trying to pass, I can tell you that from an update standpoint, the focus of the state, the, the legislators were on the foundation budget changes that came out of the study that was authorized by the governor, so, any bill other than that that was related to education pretty much was put on the table, those bills are, will survive a two-year period, so we don't have to refile them again, I've been in constant contact with the chairman of the joint committee on education and also Senator Goby on those, but if there's anything else like that, that you would like an update on or questions, please let me know in two weeks from tonight on the twenty-fifth, and I will put those in writing to our delegation to respond at the meeting on the twenty-second. Do you understand?
Yep, perfect.
Okay, other thing is, the budgets are being compiled this week, at that same night on the twenty-second, I'll give you my first draft, so about a month, more than a month, six weeks, I'd say, and we begin meeting at Capitol Planning Committee, Finance Committee, et cetera, and then you obviously know about the school committee and their work, I think they have a meeting tomorrow night, and they begin talks on their budget and try to incorporate their process with ours, and we'll meet with them in two weeks on the twenty-fifth.
Is your questions ready?
Okay.
Load up. Okay, board liaison to report, anybody got anything?
The FMPC will be meeting on the, what, the eighteenth?
Nineteenth is next Tuesday, so the twentieth, actually, there's an email that was going out today, I think there's some issues with SCA, and I posted a public hearing, but we wanna make sure that, that we'll be able to videotape it to make sure it's accessible, cable, and for running, so, but right now, we tend to have the date of the nineteenth being the Financial Management Planning Committee meeting, it's next Tuesday, which we, they'll just be reviewing the presentation that Stephen, myself and Bill Scarpotti will be doing the following night, on Wednesday, the twentieth, it's a workshop for the board of selectmen, I think that's the only thing on the agenda.
So, I was going to say that we're prepared for, for the, help with the presentation on the roads project, thank you, Mr. Woodbury, thank you for my liaison award.
Next. So, it's FMPC is meeting on the nineteenth-
Correct.
And at the same night that the Capitol Planning-
Correct.
Is meeting, okay.
Yep, the, the meeting with the Capitol Planning Committee is gonna be at six o'clock, I'm just giving them a list of, and copies of all the requests, giving them an overview of what the process will be, then essentially giving them homework to take with them, and then we'll be meeting at six-thirty, and then the Capitol Planning Committee then begins meeting on February second, where staff comes in, present to them the handles that they were given on the nineteenth.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else? Seeing none?
Um, we are, just to let you know that I, I'm meeting regularly with, with Parks and Rec and began tackling budget issues, the last time I think we took some, they took some votes, I can't say we, 'cause I'm, I'm just sitting in on the meetings, you know, looking ahead to try and restore programs for the, you know, for Luther Hill and, and for other, other facilities, so that's moving ahead, I, I think there's, I was, you know, pleased to meet someone there who is also just, just there to observe and sit in, is Paul Bouvier, who I think you had spoken with, with a, you know, keen interest in things, seeing things restored there, and, and the need to distinguish, we review the need to distinguish, you know, you know, what donations can, can go to support and what they, you know, what they can't, how do we get the, you know, keep people involved and, and what kind of things can we attempt to support with special fundraising, and what do we have to rely on the budget, regular budget for, so, those are going, well, I, Rob was not there because of the fire on Cherry Street, but I was pleased to see them moving ahead with that, and, see, we are, we have a quorum now for economic development, we're, we're shooting for our first meeting on January twenty, I said the twenty-third, twenty-third is Saturday morning, so I'll keep you posted on that, there's, there's a lot on the agenda to, you know, to get through, and my own, so my own liaison work with Quabog, I'm sorry, yeah, Quabog Valley, golly, they've got a couple of boards out there, the, the Business Corporation and the, with Sheila Cuddy's group-
Quabog Business Development Corporation?
Thank you, I always, I can't remember that, Quabog Valley Development Corporation, I met a couple of people there at, at the, at the board meeting, I'm having breakfast with them tomorrow, we're just talking about, one fellow who's the head of, of Central Mass Grown is on the, the, the Select Board in Brookfield, and we're meeting with a fellow named Jim Metcalf, who is, is involved with SCORE and does a lot of consulting with businesses and, and looking forward to seeing what we can, what we can tap into there, and he's also provided me, Clarence has provided me with a, a great contact at the Topsfield Fair, because at their fair, people get involved heavily in the, in the, in the locally grown initiatives and up, up there in that part of the state, so, it's just some, some contacts I'm, I'm pursuing, you know, bring them all back here to see what we can, we can do with them, and I'll save another comment for the, for the end, citizen input.
Okay, citizens input, last shot, guys, anybody like to be heard?
I have a, a letter that I was requesting I read for citizens input.
I don't, sorry.
No, it's okay, I was just waiting for my moment. Since it is time to put together the budget for the May meeting, I would encourage the board to increase the police department budget to allow for an increased police force. I have heard from several people that I respect that there are serious public safety problems in our town, this is certainly not a criticism of our police department, I have a great deal of respect for our police and fire department, public safety is very important to me as a senior citizen, and both departments deserve adequate funding to do their job, thank you for your attention to this issue, Carol McPherson.
Nice, okay, point noted.
Thank you, Carol.
Fourth member of staff comment.
Yes, I was just gonna say, alluded to the, in Brad talked about it as well, the, the turnout we had at the rail trail on, on Saturday was, was really heartwarming, it was a couple dozen people and, you know, you know, several groups with chainsaws went ahead and, you know, clearing the, the path, and Highway came along and did the, and did the chipping, and we were arranging branches for them, and coming to work with bow saws and lopping shears, it was, it was great to see, and, as I was saying to Ellen before the, the meeting, that on top of the turnout we had for the, for the small farm, for the trails there, that's the sort of thing it's gonna take to keep this, you know, keep this network going and, and keep people involved, so it was, it was, it was great to see that kinda turnout, and, if you could just, just mention that we had, before the end of the year, Gary and I were working on, on, on the issue of access to Browning Pond with, with local fishermen, we had a meeting in, in, in November, we distributed a summary of, of that, of that meeting to people, and the idea now is for us to- meeting to people, and the idea now is for us to gather together and try to address the, the issues point by point and find, find the right documentation, we, we need to, to know where we stand on, on the ramp and the, the authority of the, the Boy Scouts and the, and the rights of the fishermen, so that, that continues. We have not brought it as a, as a topic before the board, just because it's, it's, it's been, we've been sort of getting people's input and feedback, I don't know if at some point we'll be...
Fact-finding.
Yeah, a lot of fact-finding, so at some future point, when we get things closer to a resolved state, we'll, 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 you know, be bringing that up, but that, that, we're, we're working on that. And that's, that's it, thank you.
Anybody else? I have one comment. Kyle, come on, your turn.
Since we don't have a, what I can't think of, like Oxford has pavilion or...
Town common, you mean?
Town with a disabled... Yeah. Why don't the town use, as the Spencer Fair around, local bands, something for the town free, and just something that I was thinking about.
You're, you're, it's a good idea, it's, it's an idea that this board has, has discussed, we've, we've brought up several ideas, such as stuff that could happen that would, that a piece of that could be music, or we talked about movie nights, we've talked about music, summer music series like they have at Lester and, and Oxford, having things such as cook-offs up there, car meets, car swaps, farmer's market. We're, we're still actively reviewing that, those type of ideas, and we, we will, we will, we'll follow up on that, that, that type of idea.
It's a good point, Kyle.
Now, this is my, this is my third year, I've been mentioning this, and nobody, you know, the board hasn't come across one way or the other.
I've actually, I've actually had meetings and have, have, well, first, we brought, we, we made an attempt to bring that, that, open up for the country festival as a, as a, as a first step to make that more of a public venue where we could, it could be used. There were, you know, things happened, it was the first time, you know, and I have met with several parties about having a farmer's market up there, which sort of like other towns have, where you have a repetitive function there on a, you know, the first Saturday of every month, in the spring and summer, to have a farmer's market up there. And that's something I'm still going to attempt to, to work on. And those type of events would have, you know, theoretically, you'd wanna have food vendors there, you'd wanna have music there, but we, we've had several conversations involving different groups, including like the Celebration Committee, to, to, to have functions up there. And we're gonna work with our partners over at the Agricultural Commission to, to make sure that happens.
And it is a work in progress, just so you know.
Well, thank you.
Well, that was one of the things that, that our, the, the consultants came in and said, is that you've, to, one, one characteristic of a successful town and a popular town to relocate, to relocate to, is that you have repetitive functions, a lot of functions going on in, in the town, and that, we all thought that the, utilizing the fairgrounds a little bit more would be key to, to doing something like that. So, you're right on, Carl.
Let me just add to what Carl was saying, and I think the other, the other key to it is, is, is having, you know, more people step forward, you know, to help run these events, because we, we don't have a, you know, a huge town staff for that, but when these ideas are thrown out, and I see them on Facebook and all, and people offer up lots of ideas, what really counts when people, you know, express a willingness or get on a committee to make it happen, and I'll just use my little, you know, our townwide yard sales as an example, it was a, a citizen's idea, it came forward, I contacted them, in return, said, you wanna work in the committee, we, you know, that is still moving along as well, but the, the smallest things, and, you know, not to put down the idea or not to make excuses for, for ourselves, there's just the smallest idea, idea requires the incredible amount of organization and, and, and follow-up and all the legal issues, but the, but great idea.
I agree with you, but if you don't, if the board doesn't start somewhere, then you could get committees going on it. You gotta start somewhere, you know, start...
It's a good point, Kyle.
Even if it's something small, it's a start.
No, you're absolutely right, you're absolutely right, you're absolutely right.
Fully noted, believe me. Thank you.
Yeah, by the way, Carl, I'll be calling you very soon.
You got all ten committees you can see.
Get your shovel and pick ready.
Talk about that, when the Littlewood Field was Jamesville, on White Village Road, I was working three shifts, the people would come to my house, get the wheelbarrow, picks and shovels, so I, so they could work and clear the land. My wife, the first night they came, my wife says, what's going on?
We don't know.
This is, they got grass, they come and borrow my lawn mower.
Perfect. And they all appreciate it.
You at least deserve a fall pole named after you out there.
Believe me, I know where they live.
Good point. I'd just like to take the opportunity, as most everybody here knows and anybody listening, the fire on New Year's Eve, it happened at 2:44 Main Street, I was at a New Year's Eve party when I got a call that it was going on, I have to commend the fire department, the surrounding communities that came out and kept that, held just that one building, because when I got there, it was unbelievable. I also want to thank the Highway Police Department, police department did a good job blocking the road, Highway was out there to be able to sand, and Spencer Rescue Squad was on, on site, so I, I think that's critical for a small town, to have that much emphasis and dedicated people that came out. And then the fire that happened on Cherry Street was probably worse, another great job done by a lot of people. I was there, we had a fireman get burnt, Spencer Rescue Squad was right there to make sure he was okay. Mr. Butler, great job coming out, he logged the hoses back, saved the road, what else do we do? But those are the things that happen that nobody really sees it, whether it's the wheel, hours of the morning or on your way home from work, so I commend the people that volunteer, because that's what it is, it's volunteer, so...
Hear, hear.
My hat's off.
Good job.
Okay. We, we do have executive session, so I will entertain that.
Mr. Chairman, a request for executive session under Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Paragraph 2, for purposes of discussing contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and Section 21A, Paragraph 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate.
Does require a roll call vote, Mr. Pepe.
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I will say, we will only come out to, to adjourn. Thank you, everybody, and good night.